Good evening, I'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. It is Wednesday, April 12th, and we are meeting at the Lunenburg Middle School Collaborative Room D-132. In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised, this meeting is being, is it broadcast live? I'm saying broadcast live, but I thought so, is being recorded over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and will be shown on their YouTube channel within 24 hours of the meeting. If you wish to join via Zoom, the meeting ID is 850-1582-6044. The agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at the meeting, and of those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Would you please stand if you are able for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business this evening is public comment. The school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome at either public comment section. Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comment section has a maximum of 10 minutes. Comments about individual students prohibited by state and federal law. So if we have any public comments, they are welcome to join us. If you're on Zoom, you can use your raise your hand function. I am seeing no public comments, so we will continue on. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I forgot about the board. Thank you for reminding me, go right ahead, Mr. Beardmore.
Earlier this week, I was contacted by Michelle Belisa, who was the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club, who invited us to participate in their "Are You Smarter Than Our Sixth Graders?" quiz show in a couple of weeks. Last year, I participated as a member of the Finance Committee, and we had a good run, but unfortunately we didn't make the finals, and I think we could do better as a school committee perhaps. I know that the Select Board is also participating, although they also have potential conflict in that they have a member that's also the MC. So knowing all that going in, I think would be a lot of fun if we could participate as a board. We need three or four team members. So I want to throw that out there, and I will gladly participate, and if there's at least a couple of other members, I can RSVP.
All right, well, the date is?
The 28th, it's two weeks from Friday.
On a Friday evening, so I don't know if people are available or not, it is something I would be willing to do.
I'm willing to do, I just don't have any skills that would be useful.
You may be surprised.
I was there last time, it was automatic.
Oh, Matt, we haven't.
I believe it's at 7:00 PM, but I would have to double check.
I could make it 7:00 PM, I'm busy until probably 6:00.
Okay.
So it looks like we can field the team.
All right.
And we'll check in with Mrs. Kelly when she is available and find out.
All right, thank you very much, I'm looking forward to it.
Should be fun. All right, the Chair's report, my report is brief tonight. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to sit in on Mrs. Foyle's presentation regarding student-led civics projects. This presentation was shared with teachers and administrators from around the state. I wish to congratulate Mrs. Foyle for an excellent presentation, and thank her for her commitment to our students, it's a wonderful program. And that's all I have. So review and approve minutes, we have regular meeting sessions, February 15th and March 15th. Did people take a look at those? And did anyone have any questions about any of those minutes? Then could I have a motion to approve them?
February 16th and March 15th meeting?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Apparently not, okay. And I should have mentioned, Mrs. Kelly is not with us tonight. So next, we have no line item transfers, I presume? So the Superintendent's report.
Quick update for you on transportation forms, as of today at 2:30, we have 1,022 forms submitted. That does not account for any duplicate forms, we haven't gone through them yet for that. So extended day and early learning center programs, we've reached capacity for both the morning and the afternoon sessions of extended day for the 2023-24 school year. Any additional registrations as they come in will be placed on a waitlist. We do still have seats available for the Early Learning Center as well as the Extended Day Summer Program. I also wanted to provide you a little bit of an update that connects back to some of our action plans around recruiting teachers. We participated today in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Mass Hire, Department of Career Services Information Booth. That's quite a mouthful. Essentially, this was a virtual job fair. Next week, on April 20th, we will be participating in the Massachusetts Educational Recruiting Consortium Education Career Fair, which is hosted at Boston University. And pending acceptance, we will be participating in a regional job fair on Thursday, May 11th, at Oakmont Regional High School in Ashburn. A few reminders for families, April 13th, tomorrow evening, our literacy night at the primary school from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Friday, April 14th, is an early release day for staff professional development. The week of April 17th through the 21st, schools are closed for April vacation. Offices will also be closed on the 17th, as we observe Patriots' Day. April 25th is Math Night at Turkey Hill Elementary, that also starts at 6:00 and runs through 7:30 PM. Again, some important reminders made first, our transportation forms are due in. We need a transportation form completed for each student. This is not limited to bus transportation, this is all forms of transportation, this form gives us information. Although it's important to note that if forms are not submitted by the deadline, students may be placed on a waitlist for up to 60 business days for bus transportation. May 3rd, we have a regular school committee meeting, which will be hybrid from Town Hall at 6:30. And another reminder that annual town meeting is Saturday, May 6th, 10 o'clock at the middle high school.
Thank you very much. Next would be a student representative, I'm looking.
I don't think, no.
No, we don't have a student representative this evening, all right. And then we go on to new business, we have discussion on the progress and connections for SCL and Equity.
So this evening, I have on the meeting virtually, Mrs. Scott, our Director of Teaching and Learning, as well as Mrs. McLean, who is our Title I Coordinator. Give me a second. We also have Ms. Amy Resnick, our math specialist. All right, so Mrs. Scott, can you just verify that you can see the screen and you can hear me as well?
Yes, I can.
Ms. McLean? And Mrs. Resnick?
Yes.
All right. So this is that overview that I spoke of at the last meeting, so that we could try to help folks understand that the the things that we're working on as a district are not, they're not truly things in isolation one from another, they are really interconnected. So we thought, you know, maybe a good place to start the conversation, I know that Mr. Beardmore, at one point during comments, I believe during a public comment, a couple of meetings ago, talked about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. We referenced that a bit as we talked about SCL in the district. So I thought it might be worth just letting our public viewing audience understand what it is we're talking about here. So this is a, really a theoretical framework around human behavior and motivation. And basically, one cannot ascend the pyramid unless needs on the lower levels of this pyramid have been met. So at the very basic level, we're talking about physiological food, shelter, water, air, and safety. So that stability, that security, and freedom from physical threat, right? So those are the most basic of the needs. Then we move up to belongingness, and that's where humans are looking to feel that connectedness, feeling anchored, having roots, relationships, caring, that sort of level. And then we have esteem, which is that desire for achievement. That's where strength and confidence come in, and that's where individuals are able to cope independently. Those fall into psychological needs, and then the highest part of the pyramid is that self-actualization. And that's where we reach that place where we're talking about personal growth, development through following one's own areas of passion or interest, right? And that now raises to this level of self-fulfillment, which is ultimately what we want for all of our students. So just know that a lot of what is done in public education is really sort of grounded in much of this theory. We know that we can't get kids to a place of higher cognitive function and readiness to learn if those most basic needs have not been met. So what does this look like in practice in our schools? So internally, we sort of wrestle with how to capture this in an image that might sort of represent how things are all interconnected. And this is probably the slide we'll spend more time on talking about. And this is where members of the curriculum team can feel free to jump in. So we know that at the heart of all of this is the whole child. We do a lot of talking as a as a governance team about the importance of the academics, academic achievement, closing performance gaps, growth, academic growth for students. But there is also, we've done a lot of work around this social, emotional, and physical safety. Through COVID, a lot of the protocols that we put in place were around ensuring physical health, safety for students. But we also talk, particularly this year, in the context of our capital plan, about the physical plant and the safety and security of the physical plant. And of course, we have our social, emotional curriculum, our added staffing, a whole tiered system of support just for the social, emotional, mental health aspects, right? And then this third area is that community, it's a sense of community. It's that belonging piece. But this is also where, you know, our work around family-school partnerships comes into play as well. So as we were thinking about all of this, and what I'd like to do is kind of move through the rest of the slides for people to see the full connection, and then we'll come back and do some more talking around the different work that we're engaged in relative to these aspects here. But ultimately, all of this fits inside a bigger picture of culture. And if you go back and you look at the strategy for continuous improvement, and all of the large objective areas, as well as the action plans, we talk about and have been talking about moving to a more data-driven model of work, right? Student assessments and basing decisions on student assessment as an example. We know that we're looking to build a more inclusive culture, and that's inclusive for all of our students, but it's also for newcomers, whether those be students or families. We want all of our families to feel that they are included at the table here. We want to make sure that what we're doing is student-centered. We want to make sure that we have a caring, compassionate culture in our school district. And you know that we've been working hard on this equity lens as well. All of these things are part and parcel of shifting us to the culture that we envision, the culture that we need to have firmly established so that we can best meet all of the needs that we're talking about here. Social, emotional, physical safety, academics, that sense of community and belong. So in thinking about some of this, and this is really more of an aside, this is something that I came across, this comes from Futures Without Violence. And this was interesting to me as a concept because in striving toward a vision of a future without violence, which is obviously something we all want in the world for our students, it gets back to that whole sense of safety. It's interesting to me that the way they mapped this out, because if you look at it, it really does parallel a lot of what we're working on in our district. Which, again, it's an aside, but I thought it was interesting that all of the things that we're working on are also in sync with a vision for a future for our students minus violence. Again, this is not our work, just an interesting connection. So how does this culture shift and the whole child connect back to the strategy for continuous improvement? There were four, as I always refer to them, the big bucket areas, there were four large objective areas. The first one was transforming teaching and learning. The entire objective is included here on this slide. But we are this year working on two different priority areas under this larger objective. And if you look at what is spelled out in these priorities, I've highlighted some key words. And these key words go back to those areas of social, emotional, physical safety, academics, and relationships, community. The second of those four big objective areas was cultivating climate and culture. There are actually two slides on this one, because we have four priority areas that we're working on this year. And again, you can see here in the bolded text that this gets back to that notion of a safe school environment, a caring and inclusive environment, a secure environment, prioritizing social, emotional, and mental health, and those strong relationships. You have the continuation of the focal areas under cultivating climate and culture. The third objective area was around communication and operations. And this is really about operational efficiency, including communication. But this is so that the day-to-day operations are not requiring as much manpower, if you will, person power, so that our staffing can be more focused on meeting the needs of the community. And then that last area, equity, access, and achievement, as well as opportunity for all students. And this gets at that culture equity, which connects back to academics, it connects back to the social, emotional, and physical safety. It also connects back to the larger community and those relationships as well. We had been asked at one time during public comment about a definition for equity. I'm not saying that this is the Lunenburg Public Schools' definition of equity, but this is a pretty pretty standard definition that is used in public education. This one here comes from the National Association of Colleges and Employers. The key here, I think, is the graphic image. Equity does not mean equal, it does not mean that everybody gets the same thing. If you imagine where each of the heads are in that equality portion of the graphic, if there were a six-foot fence, they may not all be able to see over the fence. However, if you provide everybody what they need to see over that six-foot fence, then some are going to need more than others. So this notion of we're trying to give individuals what they need. So how does all of this strategy connect back to the mission and the vision? And again, I went back to the text of the mission statement and the vision statement, and bolded those areas that connect back to the work that we're doing around SCL, physical safety, academics, and that sense of community and relationships. So in the big picture of all this, this is work that's ongoing. But where do we go from here, what comes next? This summer, as I do every summer, I will meet with the leadership team, and we will include others as needed. As an example, we know that we're going to be looking to involve parents in our conversations relative to the the areas that we want to focus on coming out of the family-school partnership work. But we will involve those voices that are necessary, but we're going to be taking a look at this spring's MCAST data, our district benchmark assessments, our climate survey results. We will do a repeat of the communication survey at the very end of the school year, so we'll take a look at those results. We have our equity audit report recommendations. We will have identified priority areas to work on coming from our family-school partnership, work with the Department of Ed. We do those SWOT analysis exercises in our schools, and that strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We take a look at the data that comes from those exercises. We will look at the progress that we have made on the existing strategy action plans, our school improvement plans, and those district-wide goals that we set this year. Taking all of that into account, we then go back and look at the strategy for continuous improvement. And we make revisions to that larger document or the existing priorities and action plans. We may need to develop new priority areas with action plans. But every year, we do this work in the summertime and bring back to the school committee in the early fall our proposed revised strategy for discussion and ultimately for approval. Because this is the overarching guiding document that is the blueprint for all of the work done in the district, regardless of the level. Everything connects back to this overarching document. Our goals, our school improvement plans, etc., our Student Opportunity Act plan. It all is connected back to the strategy. So that's where we're going with this. So what I'd like to do now is just go back to the slide that sort of captures, hopefully, it with one image, the work that we're doing in the district. So you can see, I've sort of got some color matched to the areas. But just know that work in each of these areas really does contribute back to the culture shift that we're working towards here in the district. I'm not sure if Mrs. Scott or Mrs. McLean or Ms. Resnick want to jump in on either, or actually, any of the three areas to talk about, or if you want me to just continue to take it from here.
I'll jump in, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, one thing I wanted to point out is you'll notice that in each of the areas, there are some repeated points. For example, relationship building is important in all of the areas, communication is important. So that's something that we noticed as we were kind of brainstorming these lists, is that certain things are going to thread and carry through all of this work. And again, I want to reiterate that all of this work is connected for the whole student, that they're not going to be ready to learn if they don't feel like they belong in a classroom. They're not going to be ready to learn if they don't feel safe. And they're not going to be ready to learn if they're struggling socially, emotionally, struggling with mental health. So we're trying to help, you know, do what's best for students in all areas. That's, I know personally, and I know our district leadership team always comes back to, what is the best case scenario for students here, what do our students need?
Ms. McLean or Ms. Resnick, if you have any thoughts that you wanted to add?
So one thing I'd like to make sure that we say is, you know, we know we're focusing so much on data. We want to be data-driven. It's important to look at how our students are doing and make decisions based on that. We're getting this very rigorous, excellent curriculum that our teachers are working so hard on implementing. But the real key, I think, for us is the whole child. And we know that our students are more than numbers on an I-ready spreadsheet. And they they are more in the classroom than their test scores. So all of these things that we do all fit together really nicely. And we just want to make it clear that it is the student and their well-being and their self-esteem and their sense of confidence and success that is most important in all of the work that we do.
And I would just like to add as a plug-in for the MTSS process and the structure. That structure has now allowed us to be able to start early, really track and look at students. And when we see something that doesn't look right, like there's someone not learning or not progressing appropriately, then we can do a child study and say, why? Why is this happening? What's happening? You know, is it an attention thing? Is it where they're sitting? What else is going on? We start gathering all of this information to really start being able to make strong decisions, not just like a Band-Aid, but really look at the problem and see where we can intervene. And that supports social, emotional, academic, everything. And it helps us get involved with parents so that parents understand what's happening because it we need that partnership. And so having this structure and having the MTSS staff allows us to be able to do this seamlessly, instead of just what would we do if we didn't have a structure in place for supports? It would be mass confusion and not productive.
Lots of questions?
I like the visual. I like the way everything is tied together. And also the way that similar, you know, a similar thing, like, for example, Mrs. Scott said, communication pops up in all of them. Because people don't always understand how everything is all tied together so that the children have the potential for their highest academic achievement. So I think you've done a good job representing.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Beardmore?
So first of all, thank you for the presentation. I know a lot of thought went into this. And I think that this is the kind of thing, so long as we are in the SEL business, which I expect we'll be in for to some degree or another throughout our various tenures. We're going to need to keep revisiting. It's kind of like the Blue Knight logo we talked about at the last meeting. As people come up through the schools and you're doing different things at different levels, and there are new parents, we need to continually talk about these topics and talk about the some of the specifics that we are oriented to and prioritizing based on the data that you cited. I personally am really looking forward to looking at the data over the course of the summer and 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 getting into the analytics and the strategy update in the fall. One of the words that kind of struck me, as you said it, was priorities. Because I think that we're going to have to be really clear about our priorities for the next year, plus really the next two years. As I've said here many times, I think, in the grand scheme of things, this was an okay budget year. I don't think next year is going to be so okay. And and as a result of that, I think the priorities that we set and articulate in the fall of next year are going to be really important because they're probably going to reverberate into budget season for the following year. So I'm particularly interested in that.
Thank you. Mr. Layton?
Just off of what Mr. Beardmore had stated, I just got the idea that I feel like sometimes open houses can have these kind of opportunities where we could have some of our staff and administrators sharing some of that information. Maybe there's open times where people can go see the music department or art department, things like that, but also see about SEL and different aspects that we want to inform parents. I think it gives parents an opportunity to find out more than just the the academic classes.
Anything else? No? I particularly also like the definition of equity. It's something that I would use with my children in the classroom in a very different way because I taught very little kids. And I would always say fair isn't equal. So if Johnny gets to draw sometimes when Johnny's frustrated, then fair isn't equal. You don't need to. And it is was always amazing to me how kids understood that, that nobody ever argued with me. I cannot remember a single child saying, but I like to draw. But they knew that child needed to let off steam somehow, and that was a way for him to do it. So your equity graphic was reminded me of very much of that situation. So thank you. I appreciate it. And I assume it will be, if it was not posted on it's posted on the website. So anybody who may be watching this tomorrow or the next day, if you want to see this in detail and go through, to the first offering, and go through particularly this circle graphic that was so carefully done, they can find that on the web. Okay? All right, thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you. So moving on, we have a non-discrimination policy. This is where I'll turn it over to this big building. We had a policy exactly the same last Friday. And we were preparing to move out to the M.A.S., maybe recommend language. We've already been talking about language. But then there was a larger conversation about that state.
Now you're good. Now it's great. So when we sat down to discuss the policy, I realized that there were a lot of concerns that, like, just writing out a policy wouldn't work. If the policy subcommittee just generated a list of words and said, here you go, it would be presumptuous in a way that I think would make getting a policy finalized more difficult. And so what I thought might be better instead is if the committee as a whole set like the guiding principle, and then we try to achieve the policy. I tried to write a policy to achieve that guiding principle. So there were a couple of things that we talked about that were concerns, and without further direction from the whole board, I don't feel like the policy committee could have made any useful headway. And so one of the considerations is how do we integrate the equity audit proposals into a non-discrimination policy in a way that comports with our legal obligations and comports with the collective bargaining agreements, obligations that we have, and fits with what we want to project to the outside, to people coming to Lunenburg, to people that we're trying to recruit to work here as who we are. So that that's the first thing, like, how do we get all of these things to fit together? The the second thing that I think that we kind of had a difficult time figuring out is there are certain things that work only for staff. So it's pretty difficult, given how school works, to have age-based discrimination. I mean, you're you are going to have age-based discrimination. You know, you can't have a five-year-old in high school. But discriminating against somebody in an employment setting because they're 15 years older would be problematic. And so do we want to have a divergence in a non-discrimination policy between students and employees? And then the last consideration, which sort of ties into that first thing, is in my experience, and this is my professional experience, the non-discrimination policy often a point of pride or a way of recruiting. And so do we want to take that into consideration with how we write it? You look at like the EEOC's guide of what you need to include. It's pretty dry, and it's not very aspirational. And I don't find it to be compelling. But when I was coming out of law school, one of the things that the recruiter for the place that I chose the work said was we've had parental leave, including paternity leave since 1994. And so as a dad, it seemed pretty appealing to me. And ultimately, it was one of the things that made me decide that I wanted to work there. And so do we fashion our policy in a way that comports with the law, but also acts as sort of an aspirational statement that could attract the best and brightest talent in terms of teaching and administrators? And so I didn't feel like we had enough. I think it would be better if the whole committee waited on those three issues, and then we shaped the policy that way instead of trying to cobble something together and, you know, going about it the other way around. I mean, these are really big issues. And I feel like especially right now, where we have such a polarized climate, that it's better if we talk about it now and then talk about it a little more as we go along. But like, set it up so that this is something that we're doing deliberately with consideration and thought at each phase, instead of like, here's our boilerplate language. We cut out Lunenburg Public, or we cut out, you know, Ludlow Public Schools, and we put in Lunenburg Public Schools. I I think that this is, you know, it's the it's, in my opinion, like, one of the most important issues that we do. So.
Thank you for bringing that up. I hadn't thought about a I hadn't thought about a non-discrimination statement as being something that would be important to a future employee, but I can see where it would be. It's a very, very good point taken. As far as having two different policies for staff members and students, I I can see the age discrimination, but in some ways I could see age discrimination in a student body. If you have a child that, for whatever reason, is 15 and is in the eighth grade, there could be age discrimination against that child. You know? I don't know what would cause that, maybe maybe being homeless or whatever, but I I think it could be possible. There could be. I don't know what the other people think about that.
I think I think likely there would be the opportunity to fit it all in one policy in regards to like when you brought up rental leave. I feel like that would be an overarching more, something that would be more specific in like negotiations and things like that. But I feel like for the policy, I don't know. My first thought was, look at MASC, see what that looks like, and maybe if there was another suggestion or a different way of going about it, I would be open to suggestions. But my first initial thought was start with MASC and kind of go from there.
So I think that there's something else for the committee to consider as well. There's policy and language around non-discrimination and policy. But there are other locations that a statement could and should and is.
Planbooks, our boardroom. Apparently, we're now being asked to incorporate a statement of non-discrimination on a letter. So I think I think that this is more of the philosophical discussion around how to frame that message. About the non policy.
So not to get too far off, but it kind of reminds me of like the school's mission. So I don't know if you can talk a little bit about the process of how the school mission is reviewed and then approved. But I feel like, in my opinion, I think it's the school community that would work on it, and then the school committee would approve it.
That's definitely
Yeah, that's a really good idea. Yes. Really good. I feel terribly unqualified right now. Like, I just, I feel like I just don't know it. I have some ideas as I look at it, but, you know, the example here you know, hair texture, hair type, those kinds of things. It's just not anything that I thought much about, ever. So like, you know, I think there are other physical activities that, you know, if you're going to go into that level of detail when it comes to hair, there may be other physical actions that we need to consider. So I just don't know. I feel like this needs broader discussion. I do think, though, that policy and communications are two different things here. And I think we think should probably be treated separately. I I think that we probably need, and this could be a potential outcome, or maybe we need some guidance from the partnership program, some philosophy around how we intend to communicate this. You know, some guideposts so that we can figure out some of the practical applications of communications. For example, at first glance, when you said put something related to this on our letterhead, in my mind, that just seems like way but maybe, you know, but but maybe that would support some, you know, philosophical initiative or strategic pillar that we would want to support. So I I just, I feel like like this is the very beginning of discussion, but probably needs a lot more
I think, too, that you know that there's been an action plan, not that we're timeline, not working on it this year, but it lives on the horizon for next year, is revisiting core values and connecting that back to our priorities and commitment and equity and well-being, the whole child, all of that, right? So I think that there is a place there for a broader discussion, maybe a revisit of the mission statement. When I came into the district, the district had just gone through the exercise of developing a mission statement, reading the state and the core values. Of course, you know, superintendent 101, I mean, revisit all that. Well, not when it's just been completed. So we work within that framework. But that's been five years now. So I think we're coming to that time where it is appropriate to go back now and revisit all of it in the context of, you know, how far we've come in the last five years, working on on all of these different areas. Maybe the mission statement changes a bit, maybe it doesn't. It definitely, I think, we could we could do a better job getting clearer around core values for the district. And I think that that does then lend itself back to this statement that would be a public-facing statement outside of policy.
Just the other consideration is that Dr. Burnham was really helpful and sent some cases, but I think it was last year, or it was it, I think it was last year, or it was either late two thousand twenty-one or early two thousand twenty-two, that it, it, some of these discrimination categories were clarified by the Supreme Court. And, and it was a really close vote. And the vote that decided it was new court system, no one saw that coming. And so like as a lawyer, even though I don't practice, I do a lot of employment law, it was just fascinating, but it does pose a real problem for a, a public entity like we are in crafting a statement that will withstand changes. But at the same time, import with the law, because like Dr. Burnham sent a case that was decided out in Springfield at the end of two thousand twenty-two, and it was the first time, first case of its con. And I, I, I just don't know how to make a statement right now because there's so much in flux. In a way that it has not been since, you know, maybe the sixties, I think that like the cases are changing so quickly that it might be helpful to have our turning way in and say like, here's where we think it's going to go. And do we want to create protections for categories that we anticipate getting real protection? Versus, do we want to just wait and see? And, and I don't know how to answer that question is ultimately it's a question about liability. And, you know, the less money we give the lawyers, the more money we spend there.
Just like, yeah, I would agree with the, the last statement that yeah, the less money we can spend on lawyers. And that's why I lean towards looking at the MASC language and sticking to it. And then they have lawyers that literally are going to be revising this as, as new case law comes out. And then I think we could revisit the policy again as they make recommendations.
We actually have revisited these policies a few times because they are in flux and they do come out with recommended additions to the language. Um, in my time here, this is not the first time we've looked at updating the nondiscrimination language. Just as an FYI, the policy subcommittee is meeting on Friday and, um, the attorney, the school department attorney will be able to attend that meeting. So we can take up some of these questions with the attorney.
That would be good information because then that would give us a little bit more of a a way to go and give you a look at where to go. But I think you're very smart in bringing it here. Before you spend all that time crafting the policy and then it's first read and then you get sent back and then because this is something that's difficult.
And the thing that struck me was like, I don't all know how these things are managed on a day-to-day in the classroom. And so like having a policy written is really helpful to provide guidance, but if I don't know what it's like in the classroom, it's not going to be great policy. So like, you have classroom, you have classroom. I don't, and I don't know how teachers deal with some of these things, you know, like I, I, I probably, had I not gotten a captain's score, they did not believe in any, in certain stuff like this, I probably would have been ADHD and, and, you know, I don't know how my schooling would have been done differently. But I think it would have been done differently. And I think that teachers who are on front lines and dealt with this, they'll know better how to do that. And so hopefully by having this conversation here with you guys and then maybe soliciting opinions from other people, we could have a a policy that's grounded in actual practice as opposed to something that, you know, is just like words on paper. Like I, I have no idea how teachers deal with, you know, like neurodiverse children. It's, you know, you go to Cub Scouts and see, see kids that function differently and solve problems differently, but like when you have to get a lesson done in I don't, I don't think that's like kind of magical that you guys can get it done. So I don't know. And, and without knowing, it felt like it would be unwise to write this down.
No, I think that makes sense. And I think, um, Brian's suggestion to, to bring it to some teachers and, and, you know, see what they think, I think is a very good suggestion. Does that count?
Yes.
Okay.
I just didn't want to do it without you guys knowing, right?
I think that was, that was very smart of you, because I think that will save time in the long run.
Clear that we do not intend to touch what is being presented as the capital plan. I also want to make it clear that I feel the balance of the money still should go to Marshall Pack. Um, I, I think that's very important. And in writing a letter, I would, I would put that at the top of the list. This is once in a lifetime money that when the money first came and supposedly the public was going to get this big survey to weigh in and all this stuff. Um, it was all for what would benefit the whole community at large, which is why we went with the sidewalk idea. Because the side book idea was going to help with our transportation problem, also help with anybody who wanted to walk to Marshall Pack. Because the sidewalks would would align in that general direction. Um, I don't have any problem at all saying that if you are going to be funding things now, the, the. The plow sander truck that we requested is high on the list, on the capital plan list. Um, I think it's like, I think there are two other things and then it would be funded, something like that. Um, it would be in the spirit of the capital plan. It was what we had next on their list. I would have no problem putting that in. And I understand your point about the um, field situation, obviously. But I, I just want to make it clear that we're talking about ARPA funds.
Yeah. So could I just make a clarification for?
Yes, please.
Since you raised it, I, I didn't intend to because. I think the discussion of last week's finance committee was. Not reflective of the request that I made personally of the finance committee. Um, so just for clarity, and I'd be happy to make my email public. I've shared it with Carol. Uh, I sent an email to the members of the finance committee last Thursday requesting that they put off their recommendation on the capital plan. Um, because. I thought that number one, it had been rushed and there hadn't been enough time to properly consider it. Um, but that number two, because of that timing. The school committee had not had the opportunity really to react to the updated recommendation that the town manager had made. Um, and speaking for myself. I have, I, I asked questions at the public hearing about funding for other articles such as. The special purpose stabilization account and the O C A B account, and they were not answered to my satisfaction. Uh, and they still have not been answered to my satisfaction. And for one of them, I sent a follow up email to the town manager and it still hasn't been answered. I don't think that we're following the policy in, in funding other articles. As a result of that, I think that the capital plan really needed more time. Also, the fact that the capital plan is. Clearly, by the way, it, it is being reflected by the town manager is being supported by ARPA. And ARPA funds are being used in a way that. Is different from how we originally were asked to, to frame ARPA. Um, so I just, I thought it needed more discussion. Unfortunately. My email was inflated and interpreted by, I think, people who didn't read it uh, to mean something that it didn't mean. Um, but, but my intent all along. Was exactly the request that I made this evening. And I would also add it, it actually came out of a discussion that I had with the chairman of the select. Um, as a, you know, looking at potential routes uh, to deal with these issues. Um, so in any event, that, that's the nature of the request. Um.
Thank you for clearing that up. I, I just think the, the public needed to know where that.
Yep, I appreciate you bringing it up.
Um, so I would have no problem writing a letter stating that. One, we support. Um, the balance of these funds going to Marshall Pack.
I, I would change the word to uh, preponderance maybe, or, or majority, or something along those lines. Balance reflects everything that's left.
Well, I, I didn't know about the educational thing. I am not so good with the. So there we go.
Keep going with our, our goals and our priorities. But that adding the situation. On so.
And as well.
Keep wrapping into every, every one. We do support those projects that are going to help everyone.
And our priority, which does not match the capital plan, was the um, film, the windows. But I would go in the order of the capital plan priorities because that's what they're doing. That's what they seem to. You know, I, I just think that is the better thing to do.
So I think that that's. I'm not sure I would agree with that. And I, I still think that the priority that we handed out a few months ago was. The capital planning committee and town manager didn't see. But since then, there have also been discussions. I have with the superintendent and with, with each team um, around some. Potential alternatives, funding, um, or maybe even some other ways of coming at this.
Right.
Specifically for the, the most. Um, I, I understand that ARPA covered first world windows in this building as well. Um, but in my mind, the biggest issue there, probably the window faults. On the, the west side, south side. And, and I think that there are alternative means that we should. Like I've probably given. The history that.
Right. Sure. So, um, I would. Then entertain a motion to write a letter. Requesting that the majority of the remaining funds go to Marshall Pack. And if funding is available, um, we would like to add to our list, the plow sander and the turf field. Is that? Sorry. Okay, all in favor? I, I, that's what we will do.
Thank you.
Alrighty. All right, primary school A C project.
So any further conversation with the town manager, she's advised that a letter be drafted. Um, it can be shared with the. The chairs of the other boards and committees, uh, seeking support for our revised plan proposal. Um. I think it, it may be appropriate that it be signed perhaps by the chair of the school committee and my son.
So the, um, the letter is in our folder.
Lose a draft.
The draft, yeah.
It largely comes from the memo that was in your packets, uh, a few weeks ago when you all, um, reviewed the, the. For the other boards that might give this consideration.
So I was, I was fine with this letter as written, but once again, as you all know, finance is not my strong. Intent of what we wanted to do. We wanted to make sure that there was cooling. Um, in that building and obviously we're not spending seven million dollars to get cooling in that building. So this seemed. Around it, I would like somehow. Even if it's not on this, but, um. The usage of the air. In the summer, in that building.
The, the topic of. The building itself. I think I'm back on. Um, the, the issue of potential uh, heat damage to the building. Um. I think was not handled. Clearly or consistently by us.
That's fine, but.
And I think that, that there needs to be clarity on that because the question will be asked for sure. By the members of the finance committee and I would suspect by, by at least one member of the select board. Um, so I don't know if the detail needs to be in this letter, but. I would like to be briefed before it goes. As to how we intend to answer that question. And I understand Mr. Pusiteri is not available this evening, but I, I, I think we got to figure that out. Um, the second issue. Uh, unrelated to that, um. And by the way, I do think that there's an operational aspect to that, such as do we intend to run the air conditioning? When the building is not in operation, right? Like that.
Right.
That kind of thing.
Right.
Um. There was also a question about operating costs that I don't think we had done a calculation around, and I think we ought to at least have some kind of answer at the ready on that. Um, the last issue, and, and this is just. Uh, a math issue, I guess, is. When, when I look at, we are, I think we just need to do some fine tuning around what our ask is. And then how that breaks out amongst phase one and phase two. Um, because I see twenty two classrooms and two additional offices. And then I see. Sixteen. Classrooms and then eight classrooms. So I think that somewhere there's two offices that need to be added, added to phase two, um, that we just need to specify. I'm assuming that the offices land in phase two, but I'm not sure. Yeah, okay. And stipulating that, I, I'd be happy to recommend approval and give the, the chair and the superintendent. The authority to, you know, to, to run this forward.
Any other thoughts? Letter, where it goes. All those in favor? Aye. Alrighty. Then now we're on second read of policies thirty. Oh, two, payment procedures, thirty four oh six, depository of funds authorized signatures. Thirty four, ten, purchasing principles, expenditures, procurement and authority. So in general, um, when there have been no comments, we will waive the second read. Have you had comments? About the policies? All right, then do I have a motion to waive the second read of those policies? All those in favor? Aye. All right, third read policies. Thirty two oh three, funding proposal and applications, thirty three oh one, fiscal accounting and reporting. Thirty three oh two audits, thirty three oh seven bonded employees and officers, thirty four oh one. Um, we are happy to trade off with Mr. Schoen, Breeney, if you wish.
I, I'll, I'll be happy to start, Mr. Um.
Just make sure that microphone's here. Oh, yeah, if your microphones are on, if you're reading.
All right. Green light is on. Fiscal management and non-instructional operations, three thousand, income thirty two hundred. Funding proposals and applications, thirty two oh three. The school committee will encourage the administration to seek and secure all possible sources of state, federal and other special funding. Uh, other special funds that will enhance the educational opportunities for the children in its public schools and school and district goals. The superintendent will be kept informed of all possible funds available to the school system under various state and federal programs. And in a man, in what manner these funds can best be used in the school system. The superintendent will be responsible for seeking out and coordinating the development of proposals for all specially funded projects. For, and for submitting proposals to the committee for approval. The school committee shall authorize applications for any non-entitlement grants prior to submission of these applications and projects. Upon award notification, grants and gifts to the district must be presented by the school committee before expenditure. The superintendent will submit for school committee approval, spending plans at the same cost center level as the district budget. The superintendent is authorized to sign all reports for these projects. And will be responsible for the proper expenditure of funds received for such project. The superintendent shall ensure that the district has and follows a written set of procedures and grant administration. That aligns with state and federal laws and regulations. And legal reference is chapter forty four, section fifty three A. And there's a comment from M A S C. Do I read that?
We did read in the last one, but I don't know that we can leave that out.
Okay.
Cause it's not part of the.
Okay.
Policy.
And then there's a reference about the source for the M S, M A S C update.
I can read the next one, thirty three oh one, fiscal management, non-instructional operations, three thousand accounts, thirty three hundred. Fiscal accounting and reporting, thirty three oh one. The superintendent shall be ultimately responsible for receiving and properly accounting for all funds of the school system. Maintaining effective internal controls so as to assure the efficiency of operations, adequate safeguarding of property. Assurance of expenditures in accordance with programs under which revenues are received in compliance with applicable laws and regulations. The accounting system used shall conform with state requirements and with good accounting practices. Providing for the appropriate separation of accounts, funds and special monies. The school committee shall receive periodic financial statements from the superintendent, showing the financial condition of the school department. Such other financial statements as may be determined necessary by either the committee or the administration. Will be presented as found desirable. Legal reference, M G L, chapter seventy one, section thirty five, see policy thirty one oh two.
Okay, I'll take the next one.
I'm sorry, I have one comment on this one.
All right.
Uh, the word assure on the second line should be insure. E N S U R E. As opposed to assure. Assure means like, I think you did a great job. Ensure means to promise or guarantee.
Okay. We will make that change.
Okay, sorry, super nerdy.
Don't be sorry, you cut that out.
They assure you that was.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next one, fiscal management and non-instructional operations, three thousand, accounts thirty three hundred. Audits thirty three oh two. The financial records of the town of Lunenburg Public Schools shall be subject to an annual audit by a private accounting firm as part of the annual town audit. Additionally, the district is also subject to the following. End of the year financial compliance report. Every Massachusetts school district must submit the results of this report to the department. This end of year report must be submitted to the department on or before September thirtieth of each year. Student activity account, as determined by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Student activity accounts are audited per their requirements. The committee may request an additional audit of the school district's accounts at its discretion. Source M A S C, updated twenty twenty two, legal reference, M G L, forty four, sections thirty eight to forty. Uh, seventy one, section forty seven, seventy two, section three. Cross-reference, D I fiscal accounting and reporting, J J F, student activity accounts.
Fiscal management and non-instructional operations, three thousand, accounts thirty three hundred, bonded employees and officers, thirty three oh seven. Each employee of the school district who is assigned the responsibility of receiving and distributing, dispersing. School funds will be bonded individually or covered by a blanket bond. The municipality will pay the cost of the bond. Source, M A S C, updated twenty twenty two, legal reference, M G L. Forty, section five, forty one, section one oh nine A, seventy one, section forty seven. Cross-reference, D I fiscal accounting and reporting, J J F, student activity funds.
All right, I'll take the next one. Uh. Fiscal management and non-instructional operation, three thousand, expenditures thirty four hundred, purchasing and purchasing authority, thirty four oh one. The acquisition of materials, equipment and services will be centralized in the superintendent's office. The superintendent or their designee will serve as a per, as purchasing agent. The acquisition of materials, equipment and services will be centralized in the superintendent's office of the school. They will develop and administer the purchasing program for school, for the schools in keeping with legal requirements and. The adopted school budget. It shall be the responsibility of the superintendent. To, uh, to procure material supply and put the services at the lowest possible cost. Since there is quality and clarity for proper operation of the school district, thereby containing the maximum value for these public dollars spent. To maintain the district's reputation, the variance in content and the eligibility and promote impartial and equal to the needs of all who wish to conduct business in the district. To encourage mutually cooperative relationship with the reflecting department, recognizing the successful purchasing as a result of team training and effort. To promote social and economic goals such as encouraging local, national, small, minority and women owned businesses participate in bidding for district purchases. School purchases will be made only on official purchase orders approved for insurance by the appropriate unit head and superintendent. With such exceptions as being made uh, by the latter for emergency purchases with prior approval of the superintendent. And those made with petty cash funds with prior approval of the principal. Legal references, uh, chapter thirty one, section forty nine. Source, uh, M E S C, update, uh, two, legal references, N G L, thirty eight, seventy nine, uh, forty nine.
Okay, that will do it. And we had no comments on any of these. All right, so then I would entertain a motion to, uh, um, approve all five of these. All those in favor? Aye, all right. So now we go to reports. Do we have any reports this evening? Mr. Schoen, Breeney.
Well, uh. You know, we can put it on the agenda. Uh, policies, the committee was working on, uh, non-swimming nation policies, we've got some more guidance to do that. Um, we're also going to review with, uh, attorney, Dr. Verden, explaining that some legal stuff that we were hearing, and I want to scratch it for out. So, it works. Um, uh, also another update from the, uh, P D O. Uh, first of all, we had a special guest. Uh first of all, we had a special guest, PTO leading, uh Dr. Burnham's name, and uh talked about some of the future plan. Uh the PTO had and then uh last weekend, it was the Illumination Studios Mario movie. It was at the Pittsburgh Cinema, it was at Cinema World, and it was a huge hit. They had repurchased all three or three theaters. They sold out all three theaters. In fact, I think they held back twenty seats in each theater, and they had all of those go. They made a ton of money and they had, for the first time, I think, zero complaint.
Wow.
Yes, it was great. It was really, I I actually went. It was fantastic. Uh one of my uh son's friends' mothers was singing one of the songs, and we all acted out like hilarious. Everybody was really delighted, and we got out right before, you know, the day started to be controlled. It was really well-run, well-organized event. They are planning another fundraiser. Um they're working on a couple, but the one that they're putting a lot of effort into is the politics fundraiser. And apparently they're trying to get permission to have students in.
Oh, how cool.
There you go. They did a lot of good work.
That's terrific. That sounds like a great time. Anyone else with the report?
Building Design Committee, uh Building Design Committee did not meet. Uh the meeting was canceled for Monday. Um Turkey Hill met uh last week. It was Miss Champagne's last last meeting. They recap the the STEM night, which is very successful. Um the they're doing spring activities after school, which have been going really well. And I mentioned that the school committee update, they were, the the bus policy had changed, but still looking for more people to send in their forms. And they were, they focused on the calendar, whether they should change the protocol for the open house and when to do it, kind of like pros and cons of doing it earlier in the year versus a little bit later. Uh so we talked about that too.
Alright. Anything, Mr. Beardenmore?
No.
Um the finance committee met on the sixth of April, and they were continuing their recommendations for warrant articles. They had a big discussion about the letter for the town meeting that goes in the annual report. And they talked about our issue with the ARPA funds and such, but we already talked about that, so I don't have to go back through that. And that was it for them. So if we are, if that is it on reports, then we are back to public comments. If there's anyone that would like to make a public comment, they're welcome to do so.
I just want to say I really believe in the communication and teaching thought this week, not this past week. I think it's been, uh, so far, knock on wood substitute. I think it's been
We thank you for all that communication. I saw the sign in front of the primary schools. I was coming over. I said, oh, there's a sign. So, good. That's good. You know, we'll see what happens. That's all we can do. So uh seeing as we are set with that, topics for future discussion, we're still working on a um bullying, we talked more about that last time, about um having the attorney come and talk to us about the law, but then also having some members of the um social work team um talk to us about possibilities of how we can impact an improvement on this problem. Uh so that's, that's still out there. Our next meeting um is scheduled for May third.
Yes. But potentially, I mean, we'll keep the door open if the attorney is available um in close proximity to the third, we may consider eliminating the third and and moving to another date in close proximity. I I don't know that that's going to happen yet, uh so stay tuned on that. If there's any change um to to a a scheduled date, I will definitely reach out to let you know what the options are before we make any changes.
Okay. So that being said, um is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn in the late, yeah.
And a second? All those in favor?
I.
Alright. Well, last week, we thought of you because we were out at nine oh three.
Whoa, this is eight oh eight.
Even better. You wanted to come in?